Good evening. Thanks, I'm honored to be here this evening to preside over the swearing-in. And since I do have the microphone, I get an opportunity, and I'm sorry, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder here from the council, but my grade school classmate and teammate Scott Langston is here tonight, and his daughter Danielle, who's our Olympic medalist. As a citizen of the city of Belleville, I want to tell you Scott, your wife Alice, Danielle, how much we admire you as a family. Congratulations to all of you, and we're proud to claim you here in Belleville. Mayor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, Mark Eckert.
Having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Belleville...
Having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Belleville...
In the county of St. Clair...
In the county of St. Clair...
...aforesaid...
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear...
...or affirm...
Or affirm.
That I will support...
That I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of mayor...
The duties of the office of mayor.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'll make this kind of brief, but certainly, I was thinking on the way over here tonight, this is the fifth time I've had the privilege to take that oath. The first time was when Mark Kern, on December 20th of '04, went across the street to become the county chairman, I took the oath that day, and that was for a five-month period. And then in '05, '09, '13, and now tonight. And I will tell you, each time I think it gets more meaningful, and I think it's, I'm extremely proud and humbled to be here tonight and to be re-elected by the city of Belleville. We've done a lot together, there's a lot more to do, and I believe with this council and with the staff we have, and with the citizens, that we can accomplish great things in the next four years. So I'm excited, I hope you are, and we'll continue now with the next swearing-in. We have Jennifer Meyer, Judge.
Jenny!
Jenny!
I want to say thank you to my wife Rita. My daughter Kate's here tonight, it's her birthday today, so she's... And for all my children, my son Luke and Erica are here, and the other two couldn't be here tonight, but I've been very blessed to have all the support. My brother Mike's here. My brother Mike, longtime city employee, and my sister-in-law Jean. Judge?
Thank you. I think that's the first time I've ever heard you called Jennifer. You ready, go ahead, raise your right hand. Aye, Jennifer Gainmeyer.
Aye, Jennifer Gainmeyer.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk...
Having been elected to the office of city clerk.
...in the city of Belleville...
In the city of Belleville.
...in the county of St. Clair...
In the county of St. Clair.
...do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution...
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city clerk...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city clerk...
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I gotta do the same thing the mayor did, if my wife would come up here and stand next to me at the office. She's put up with a lot. She's got her problem well aware.
Aye.
State your name, Hart. Having been elected to the office of treasurer...
Having been elected to the office of treasurer...
...in the city of Belleville...
In the city of Belleville.
...in the county of St. Clair...
In the county of St. Clair.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge duties.
...of the treasurer...
Of the treasurer.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I don't think I have a lot, but I've kind of made a few words. I want to thank my wife Jennifer, my mom, Jackie, she's in here as well, her husband Rick, Helen, everybody else was, I mean, it helped so much. I'm sorry? Oh. Jennifer's parents, Bob. Bob and Jean, thank you very much. And looking forward to the great four years with the wonderful administration, new aldermen, those that are already on the council, and I know we're going to do great things. So thank you.
All eight aldermen who've just been elected, please come forward, and if I can try something here, we'll try to start with warrant one and go down to eight, see if you can figure that one out.
Aye.
Aye.
Please state your names. Having been elected to the office of alderman...
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Ward?
Ward.
Let that be answered.
...in the city of Belleville...
In the city of Belleville.
...in the county of St. Clair...
In the county of St. Clair.
...do solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge duties.
...of the office of alderman...
Of the office of alderman.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations to all of you.
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Dintelman?
Here.
Alderman Gah?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Weygant?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wickington?
Here.
And Alderman Barfield?
Here.
Okay, we're all present, please call the roll call of department heads. documents, and then they'll take their seats, and we'll be starting here real close to
City Treasurer Hart?
seven.
Here.
I just want to tell all of you thank you for coming, we really appreciate the support,
City Attorney Horner?
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay?
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Corr?
Here.
Finance Director Jimmy Maitre?
and this is really great to see a crowd of this size, so it'll be, we got the appointments
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregawitz?
Here.
Director of Maintenance Kenny Vaughn?
of the staff tonight, the committees, we got a special recognition, as mentioned, of
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber?
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belleville?
Danielle Langson, and I know you'll love getting a, listen to that, and to also to
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
get a chance to formally officially congratulate this young lady for all of her accomplishments.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlisle?
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaswell?
So we will be starting in just a couple minutes, just bear with us, and they'll sign their
Here.
And Director of Library Vander Speerman?
Here.
Great, got a full house tonight. papers. Roll call of aldermen. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the virgin of the earth, and of the sun. Just a little bit of housekeeping, the meetings are both audio and video recorded.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderman Consella?
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa?
Here.
Alderman Bittner?
If, when we start public participation, if you choose to, first of all, raise your
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
hand, and I recognize you, and you come up to the microphone, please give your name and speak into the microphone so we can pick up what you would like to say. The other thing is, for the aldermen here tonight, I know we have several new ones, make sure when you're addressing the council that you use the microphone so the audio also picks up for the purposes as I just said. At this time, there's no public hearing this evening, I'm going to open public participation. If someone would like to address the council, please give your name and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, preference, it should be city business. So is there anyone this evening? Yes, sir?
My name is Larry Hoffman, I live on Sixth Street, and for the last two months I've been picking the trash up and down Sixth Street, but I've noticed we've got a new bunch of trash out there, they throw out the telephone books, and they're not hitting porches, they're laying in the gutter on the sidewalks, all up and down the street, and I'm sure it's probably all over town the same way. I don't know if there's anything that could be done about it, but I just thought I'd bring it up to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We will look into that. I know a few years ago, many years ago, when I was on Health and Housing, so it's going back quite a few years ago, the newspapers were an issue, but we ended up being told that the First Amendment, we couldn't stop them. But a phone book might be different, so we might be able to give them a call and tell them that they have to get them up on the porch, so we'll do that.
I did give them a call, and the phone call went to the Philippines, and I complained about the, about the phone books not getting on the porch, they sent me another phone book and put it on my porch.
You made progress, Larry.
Nobody listened.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir? Oh, here we go, come forward.
Stuart Lanner, Belleville Old Boys, this is sure that they love this tonight, it looks like the bobbleheads have took it over to the entire city administration, I suppose all these people in the audience also are bobbleheads, and that's business out of the shrine. I mean, some of those excuses make, a kid that said the dog ate my homework, quite plausible from the excuses these so-called educated men use, those excuses were laughable, like Hong Kong, what's Hong Kong, sleeping arrangements in Hong Kong, or England, or whatever. I think Belleville just got took it for a big ride, and personally, I think the aldermen and the mayor and everybody that's run in Belleville, I think they should be tried for malfeasance in office. They wasted a whole lot of our taxpayer money, I don't see how the taxpayers could put up with it, and if you can't finish your job in 12 years, what makes you think four more years is going to do the job? Thank you.
Charles Wilson, I had hoped we could start tonight on a positive note, I would like to congratulate everybody that was newly elected, and I hope that we can have four years of working together and not fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else this evening for public participation? Hearing now, I'm sorry?
I'm just going to do it from here real quick. Tomorrow morning at Belleville East, there's a committee that the mayor's helped us with, Chief Clay's office has helped us with, and Chief Corr, his office has participated in the committee meetings. It is the Broken Hearts Program at District 201, and they asked me to invite all the aldermen to come tomorrow morning to the campus of Belleville East at 8:30. It'll be by the tennis courts, it is a drinking and driving exercise that they do for high school students, last year was at West, this year it's at East, it goes back and forth. It's at 8:30 tomorrow morning in front of the tennis courts at Belleville East. Very moving presentation, if you can't make that, then Thursday morning Brennan Kelly will be there to put on the mock court trial for the second part of the continuation of the exercise. I just wanted to pass along to the aldermen that they are invited tomorrow morning and Thursday morning. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. It's a great program, I've been there numerous times over the years, and it's quite a sobering presentation, and I think it's a very good reminder for everyone, especially our young high school drivers, to seriously think about all the consequences as they become able to drive, they get to be upperclassmen, so thank you for being a part of that, and I do encourage anyone to go. Okay, at this time, I'm closing public participation, and we're going to move on. The character word of the month, there's no one here from Basic tonight, is there? I didn't think I had anyone come forward. Character word this month is self-discipline, meaning think about your words and actions, and then making choices that are right. These character words, ladies and gentlemen, that we read each month at our schools, have really led the charge in reminding all of us how important it is to have positive character, are a good way to start our meetings out, at least the first meeting of each month, we always read the character words. Sometimes we're lucky enough to have the high school students here to inject those words in those meetings to us. Also tonight, I want to pay recognition to the fact that Congress designated May as National Military Appreciation Month in 1999, to ensure that nation was given the opportunity to publicly demonstrate their appreciation for the sacrifices and successes made by our services, men and women, past and present. Do we have, past or present, any military, stand or raise your hand in the audience tonight? I see one back here, anybody else? Stand up for a second, please. Military, let's get on the ground. You know, we're very blessed, I'll take just one, 30 seconds here, we're very blessed to have Scott Air Force Base as our neighbor, and this being their 100th anniversary this year of Scott Air Force Base is very significant, and these days, Scott Air Force Base doesn't just have air force personnel, they have branches from every service. With transcom out there, we have Army, Navy, we have Marines, we have Coast Guard, we have everyone, and all these people positively impact our community and the neighboring communities, and we're very blessed. Personally, this morning, I had a phone call from my oldest son, who told me I couldn't get a hold of him for about 10 days, and he said, well, I was on a training mission in the desert, and he's back home now, but you know, you worry about him when they're in, when they're active duty, we worry about all of you, and we do sincerely thank you, and we're very, very pleased to have all of our military friends from the neighboring base. So again, thank you, and I'm glad we chose to make these reminders. Aaron, thank you for reminding me of this tonight. At this time, I'd like to ask for, everyone should have received in their packet, the mayor's appointments for fiscal year, May 1st 2017 to April 30th 2018. I sent a revised one out, or I shouldn't say aye, Aaron sent a revised one out several days ago, I guess on Thursday or Friday when the packet came out, and there was one change. Our assistant to Aaron and myself, Jessica Muckensturm, informed us on Friday that she was taking a job in St. Louis, we're very appreciative of the time she served, and we're very happy for her. So tonight, notice in your packets you should have received this weekend, that I'm recommending, the revised list shows one more name as of Ashley Pollak as administrative assistant in the mayor's office. But I have not received any calls from anyone, the list has been out for over 10 days, and with that said, at this time, I would ask if there's someone willing to make a motion to approve the department head and staff appointments as printed for this fiscal year 2017-18. Motion by Alderman Wickington, second by Alderman Dintelman. Discussion, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wickington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go on to the next item, at this time, I would ask that someone might make a motion to approve the committee assignments for our fiscal year 2017-18 for the aldermen. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Hazel, and second by Alderman Gah, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wickington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just as a comment to the audience here tonight, we've had two evenings of orientation for the aldermen, I certainly recommend the aldermen, there's many more questions I know you have, some of those of you who are new, please don't hesitate, the staff, as you just appointed, prove them, please raise your questions, I know many of them have said, I know Royce Carlisle would like to take a few of you at a time on a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, that's very, very meaningful and important, and any other department that you'd really like to get a little bit more of an in-depth view, I certainly encourage it as soon as you can make those arrangements, so that's just good, good learning curve. So, okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Danielle Langson, who is a student at Belleville East High School, and her parents to come forward. Can you hear me? Danielle, we are, many of us have been following this whole trek, if you went through Danielle's neighborhood, there were signs everywhere, and banners, and welcome home, and good luck Danielle, when you left, and it was just, it was a joy. We've been very blessed to know the Langsons for a long time, but whether we would have known them or not, we'd be here celebrating tonight, because we're proud of you as being a citizen of Belleville who brought a lot of, a lot of notoriety to our city with your trip to Austria. Tonight here, we want to recognize, the certificate of recognition is presented to Danielle Langson in recognition of your achievement for winning a silver medal in the 400-meter snowshoe relay race, and a bronze medal in the 400-meter individual snowshoe race at the 2017 Special Olympic World Games. Your hard work and dedication to reach your goals serves as an inspiration to all of us. The city of Belleville is proud of your accomplishments and wishes you all the best in your future endeavors. We congratulate you, Danielle, it's outstanding what you've done to go away from home and to go all the way across the world and represent Belleville and the United States, we couldn't be more proud of you.
We very much appreciate the support that we receive from the community, from the city, from the people in our neighborhood who supported her. We've been able to accomplish all of this through an organization that's called Parent Teacher Organization for Exceptional Children, or PTOEC. I encourage any family who has a family member, relative, that has developmental disabilities to really seek them out, they are the way to get involved with Special Olympics. This has really broadened our world, we've been doing this since she's been eight years old, and we will be doing this until she's 80 years old. It's a major relationship. Yeah, whatever it takes. So I just very much encourage that, so seek us now, ptoc.org. Thank you.
You know, it's been a few years, and I don't want to, this is Danielle's night, but some of you may or may not know, Scott here, father of this proud lady, is our retired fire chief for many years, had 30 years on the Belleville Fire Department, and we're just proud to have the friendship with the Langsons, and Danielle, you just have, this is what you accomplished last, well, this was a couple weeks, months ago already now, but it's, it's just, it's going to be with you and with all of us for a long time, so thank you, continue to enjoy all the fun and the recognition, you deserve it. Thanks. Okay, we had one other recognition tonight, or one other segment, but it actually got postponed until the next meeting. The next meeting on, on May 15th, I think that's the night, we will be recognizing three young gentlemen from Alto for their accomplishments at state wrestling. They got told today they had to, I guess they're still competing for something additional, and they got called to a special practice session tonight, so we're going to have them here on the 15th. So we move now to the regular portion of the meeting, and ask for, at this time, if someone's prepared to make a motion to approve the city council minutes from April 17, 2017. Alderman Pousa, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alderman Steele?
We have a motion to accept and file the minutes, any additions or corrections?
All in favor of accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. We have claims, payroll, and disbursements, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $2,021,099.64, and the payroll in the amount of $889,238.4. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Wickington, second by Alderman Anthony, any additions or corrections or changes to the payment? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wickington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a city report, city attorney's report dated April 28, 2017, do I hear a motion to receive and file?
Make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Pousa, second by Alderman Gah, do I hear discussion on that motion? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. We go to, I'd ask for a motion from administration to approve the public safety software contract between the city of Belleville and Information Technologies LLC. Motion by Alderman Anthony, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wickington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a city report, city attorney's report dated April 28, 2017, do I hear a motion to receive and file?
Make a motion.
Motion carries. We have a city report, city attorney's report dated April 28, 2017. Do I hear a motion to receive and file? Motion by Alderman Pusa, go second by Alderman Ga. Do I hear discussion on that motion? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to, I'd ask for a motion from administration to approve the public safety software contract between the City of Belleville and Information Technologies LLC. Motion by Alderman Anthony, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Motion carries. The next motion I'm asking for is a motion to approve the revised City of Belleville logo. Now let me explain. Right before the city 200th, we was designed, or we went and accepted, and you all approved at that time, who was here, a logo for the 200th. We're redoing our website, and we want to put the current logo, but as you may or may not know, over the years, we've, we've had a variety of things been used as the logo. We've had the flag, we had the one from the 200th, we've had, some people have used the fountain. And until we can finish what the city, Chamber of Commerce and the city started a number of years ago, but it got stopped because of both money and obstacles of other things of importance gotten away. And we need to study this further and spend some more time on it. We felt that so we could get the, the new website design moving, we made some adjustments to the 200th anniversary logo. And if you looked at it in your packet, it's not much different, slight changes. We feel it serves us for now, and it would be great to have that officially adopted. That doesn't mean we're going to stop pursuing possible new branding. It's just, we're not ready in this year's budget, and there's no more room to do any additional branding, marketing this given year. So if someone would be so willing to make a motion to approve the revised logo of the City of Belleville, I, motion by Alderman Hazel, second by Alderman Pusa, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next one I'd ask to have a motion that came from administration is a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement that's in your packet between the City of Belleville and the Village of Swansea for 911 and non-911 dispatching services. Do I hear a motion by Alderman Ovian, second by Alderman Anthony? Discussion on any of this? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go over to the next page. We're going to communications, and this is where Jenny gets to read communications.
Thanks. Communications, 12A, communication from Beacon Ministry requesting to hold their fourth annual 5K run and walk on Saturday, July 22nd, 2017.
Is there objection if we read them together?
Yeah.
Proceed.
Communication 12B, communication from Hands to Help requesting to close East A Street between Michigan and Lucinda on June 17th to host a benefit. And communication 12C is a request from Memorial Hospital requesting permission to hold their 100th, no, I'm sorry, their 10th annual 5K run and walk on Saturday, September 9th, 2017, beginning at 8:00 AM, starting and ending at Memorial Hospital.
Do I hear a motion to approve these three? Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Elmore, Elmore to approve these three communications. Any discussion? All in favor of these communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions. Resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3301. Motion by Alderman Tyler, and second by Alderman Consella to read 3301 by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, you. Sorry?
14A, Resolution 3301, a resolution authorizing the grant of sidewalk easement.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Wiggington. Do I hear discussion on this resolution? Anybody? It's pretty self-explanatory. Alderman Anthony?
I would like to officially thank Alderman Scott here for undertaking this endeavor. Basically, what this is, is going to get a sidewalk for a, a disabled person that actually has to go across city property. When we first went out there and took a look at this, this myself and, and Mr. Ovian here, when I looked at that, we were kind of confused because that apartment building sits on the far side of city property that's actually part of Belleville Park. And Scott here took it upon himself to, even though that's not in his board, he actually took it, and we didn't mind, we didn't mind. He actually took it, he actually took it upon himself to go and get this, get this, talk to some people and get this done. And actually, this will, this resolution will give the, give the owner permission to go across city property with this sidewalk to actually get the disabled person to her car that was, that's previously grass. So I just want to thank him and, and, you know, let the, let the city know that he's, he's done, that was a fantastic job.
And it's, it's, it's the kind of things that happen occasionally, but it takes a lot of coordination, which Scott really helped pursue. And there's some businesses that he's, they've coordinated with, and they're going to donate their time and services professional. And that's not uncommon for Belleville. I'm not saying we can rush out and solve everybody's problem situation every time, but this does not surprise me how people do, when there's a good, good, meaningful cause, how people do jump in in this town. So this is, so this is what this resolution's about. So if there's no further question, if we've answered the questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no urgences this evening. Any unfinished business? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I guess, once again, any update on the Shrine Development? I know you were supposed to meet with the oblates, and apparently that meeting was canceled.
The formal meeting was canceled. Mr. Harder's been in touch with their attorney. We've had some other dialogue. There is some things happening, but we have, we did not have that formal meeting.
Are there any concerns with, with the financing or what's going on and why there is any movement?
Well, there's been minimal work out there. It's been, it's been continued to have some work, but it's not as much as we like. We've been told by both the oblates, legal and others, that they are working diligently to get this project totally 100% back on track. And, you know, we have to certainly yield to them, but we are, they're keeping Mr. Harder in the loop. And hopefully we'll learn more in the future, a few days ahead, and hopefully we'll see a lot more things happening. But there is, I'm convinced that there is some serious work going on behind the scenes.
Have you been, had any contact with the Kellers?
I've not spoke to Mr. Keller since the last meeting, I can tell you that.
How long ago was that?
Well, our last meeting was, when was our last meeting? The third Monday of April.
Oh, since the...
Yeah. I've not spoke to him since right about that time. Mr. Wiggington?
If you'd be so kind, we've got to remember that this development agreement was between the Shrine and the Kellars. We're running the shorelines out there. We are providing some, some incentives once this operation is up and running. For people that don't know this, they do not get one cent of our money until this project's up, out of the ground producing revenue. And, you know, the questions keep coming back to the city. In some cases, we're going to have to start questioning the Shrine, because this development agreement was initiated between them. And we tend to forget that this is, the city's involved, but we should be really talking to the Shrine and asking the questions.
And I can assure you, the Shrine's working very diligently. As I've said before in the newspaper, and I'll just say it again tonight, no one's probably more disappointed that it's taken this long to see the progress that we can see, which is not open. But I'm still very optimistic. The Shrine needs this project, and we're working and communicating with the Shrine very often. And we're going to continue to encourage this project, and I just ask you to be a little bit more patient like we are, because I still believe great things are going to happen. So.
Is there, just a quick question. Is there any recourse if it doesn't progress for the Shrine or the Kellars to reimburse the city for the cost of the shoreline?
Well, I think it's premature.
I think, I think agreement speaks for itself. I don't want to provide any advice to the aldermen. We will discuss that after the first debate.
Okay. All right. Miss ladies and new business, we have motor field claims in the amount of $34,281.49. What's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Elmore, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Dittelman. Do I hear any discussion on the motor field claims? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consella?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?